Testing one, two, three. This will be the June 4th, 2014 City Council Workshop Meeting, called by the regular meeting.
You're ready?
Yes.
As you can see. Good evening. I'd like to call to order a City Council Workshop, June 4th, 2014, approximately 6:50 for Interview Board applicant. At this time, Natalie Carter, if you would please. Natalie, if you would, tell us a little bit about yourself to the committee, and I know you've listed some boards here, and I'm sure a question's going to be, which one would you rate them in order for us, so we have the ability, okay?
Okay. My name is Natalie Carter. I've lived in Brevard County, Beachside, for about 23 years. Cocoa Beach, Indian Harbor, now I reside in Satellite. Love the area. I've been in real estate for 11 years. I'm very successful in real estate. I have three people working for me, so I'm very knowledgeable of what's going on with the community, what's coming up, and what demands are that people are looking for. And I really like this area, and I would like to be a help to the town if I can. I'm flexible with the boards. I would hope that you guys would maybe think, find a place where I would fit the best.
Thank you. Questions? Councilman and Vice Mayor Gott?
Hi.
Hi.
Do you have any preference of the three that you checked?
Not really. I am familiar with working with foreclosures and clearing liens, and working with permits, and working with the magistrate, and, you know, different city boards and stuff. So I'm pretty flexible. I'm open. I do like land development, and I would like to maybe help put my input there, too. I hope that helps.
And since you are a businesswoman, may I assume that you would also have an interest in redevelopment?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Well, my personal opinion, based upon what you have told us, is that your top two choices would be the Redevelopment Agency Advisory Committee and Planning and Zoning, more so than Conference of Planning, because that's some really big-picture, long-term stuff.
Okay.
Whereas the other two committees or boards are, their concerns are more immediate.
Okay.
And you'd probably see the results of your work on the commit, on the board faster.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mark?
Natalie, in your introduction, you mentioned things that, I think I'll quote you, "demands people are looking for." Can you give us an idea of what people are looking for in Satellite Beach, just from the people you talk with in the community?
Well, right now, I find that the inventory's pretty low, based on what it's been for the past four years. I know there's not much growth here. I, you know, I get demands from condos to ocean sides, you know, different types of living, you know, with the zero scape versus big lots, so just, you know, I know what people are looking for.
Okay.
Yeah.
What do you see as opportunities for improvement in Satellite Beach? What do you see as the, what I guess you'd call a big-ticket item for the city?
Well, I think that we're, we are pretty limited with how much land we have left, right?
Yeah, we're 95% built out.
Yeah, yeah, so it would pretty much be redevelopment, right?
Okay. Natalie, thank you for coming. Thank you for volunteering. The Community Redevelopment Board that we have, I believe, right now is currently full. I don't think there's any...
Yeah, I'm looking at that. I think that's, I think that's right.
Yeah, they're currently, according to this report, there aren't any seats available on that.
Okay.
There are two alternate seats that are available on the Planning and Zoning Board.
Okay.
And there is one regular seat and one alternate seat available on the Comprehensive Planning and Zoning Advisory Board. That board is a long-term looking at the city, looking out, as Vice Mayor Gott indicated. Planning and zoning gets you in the door and into a seat, even though it's an alternate seat right now, if that would accomplish some of what you're looking to do until something else comes up, because you can always transition from one to the other.
Okay, yes.
When a seat comes up. But planning and zoning is probably more geared to what you're looking at doing, and then there's an alternate seat. That doesn't mean that you aren't able to participate at meetings, because we want all of our alternates to be at the meetings.
Okay.
Generally, on boards where we have two alternates, if there's not a regular member there, one of the alternates votes, so you would still have the opportunity to partake in all discussion and possibly have a vote in that particular meeting. So if that is something that you're comfortable with, that's probably the board that's available right now.
Okay, yes, that would be fine.
Okay.
I think Cece's on that board? Yeah, she told me a little bit about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further questions from council? Natalie, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The way the process works is, at our regular council meeting, which is to follow, it's an agenda item. Again, like I said, you're welcome to stay. You don't have to. It's later on in the agenda.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further business appointments? Here are none adjourned this meeting, and we'll start the regular council meeting approximately 5:00. I'd like to call to order a regular council meeting of the City of Satellite Beach, June 4th, 2014, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilman Brimer for a moment of silence and to pledge. If you could have a moment of silence, please. You join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. At this time, Councilman Montanaro has a presentation of a Youth Citizen Recognition Award, and I'll turn it over to Councilman Montanaro.
You know, it's kind of unusual in today's society that young kids get out and do things civic-oriented that you normally don't see. We have a young man with us today. His name is Ethan Shoda. Ethan, why don't you come up here and join me, please? Ethan is, are you going into fifth grade now? All right. He was a fourth grader, but he's going into fifth grade now. He's at Surfside Elementary. And Ethan, in 2012, took over the Keeper of Our Beautiful Beach and Shore Cleanup at Pelican Beach Park for our city. He does an excellent job of coordinating anywhere from 17 to 55 volunteers who he either contacts by email, or calls on the phone, or recruits through different means. He puts out signs at Pelican Beach Park to make sure that we have knowledgeable people going by that recognize the fact that the cleanup is going on. And he does a great job for our community. And he also is a purple belt in karate. Yeah? And, let's see, there's something else here I wanted to mention on this, too. Oh, this is even, this is great. So about a month ago, I think it was, is when I met Kathy and Ethan. And I went out to one of the cleanups, and I got my bag, and I got my little thing to pick up the trash. And Ethan says, "Now, remember, you have to put your cigarette butts in something different, because we recycle those, too." So I thought that was pretty neat that, you know, we're breaking the stuff down to the point where we're picking up cigarette butts, and he was coordinating all this. So Ethan, I would like to, on behalf of the City of Satellite Beach, present this award to you, and I know that, I believe Denise is going to come up here, too, because she has something for you. And this is the City of Satellite Beach City Council Award for Youth Citizen Recognition, presented to Ethan Shoda. Ethan Shoda is a fourth grader at Surfside Elementary School. As a nine-year-old citizen of Satellite Beach, he began organizing the Keeper of Our Beautiful Beach Cleanup in November of 2012. Ethan coordinates with approximately 55 volunteers each month. His enthusiasm, diligent effort, and recruitment of volunteers have helped in the success of the beach cleanup program. It's with great pleasure and gratitude that the City of Satellite Beach award Ethan Shoda with the Youth Citizen Recognition Award, and thank him for his efforts toward the betterment of our community, presented by the City Council, June 4th, 2014. Because she's got something for you also.
Let's put this right in here. I want to get a picture with that one, too, so...
Well, just to let everybody know, Ethan took over our beach cleanup. Maybe he was retiring, and then he dwindled down to about two or three citizens that were coming out and helping her. And Ethan built it up by not only recruiting all of the children in his school, but also their parents. He has enlisted the mothers to bring snacks. They recycle on-site. He won our Citizen of the Year Award last year with Keeper of Our Beautiful for his achievements. And this, I'd like to present to you, is a citizen's, is a certificate of belt excellence for our trash bash on 2014, which I'd like to do a little bit. He was our youngest site captain for the day. And I would also like to say, no matter what he's doing today, I think we should all be very, very watchful of what he's going to do in the future, because he's going to be an outstanding citizen. And thank you very, very much for what he's doing.
At this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item 3, which is Citizens Comments. This is for citizens to make comments on non-agenda items. The floor is now open. Steve.
Mr. Mayor, welcome back.
Thank you.
I would like to address two issues here tonight. That's my point. I would like to address two issues here tonight. The first is that, as we approach November, we are starting to see electioneering signs from candidates and causes around the city. The city code restricts signs on the basis of content. A restriction that the PZAB has sought to address, and the city attorney has said is not legal. Mr. Mayor, you and I have spoken on this issue before, specifically either getting the code fixed, or removing that part of the code altogether. This is an easy one. The PZAB has a replacement code, which has been approved by the city's attorney, and there is no reason for this to linger and languish any longer. I respectfully ask again that the issue be brought before the City Council for a vote to correct or abolish the offending portion of the city code. Secondly, during the last City Council meeting, there was an issue raised as to whether the actual performance evaluation of an employee should be part of the agenda packet when the evaluation scores being discussed were presented to the council, as per the city charter and tradition. I spoke that night and said that I felt the actual evaluation would be a distraction to the overall discussion. In my mind, I could see people getting bogged down in the minutia of, Councilman Jones gave them a three in this area, when clearly they are a two. To me, that would be nonproductive. I said that the evaluation itself would be available through a public records request, and that should be sufficient. I felt then and continue to feel uncomfortable at the actual evaluation, not a score, but the actual evaluation, being vandered about in an open forum. I think there are better ways to preserve the openness and transparency of the evaluation without bringing unnecessary bickering and strife into play. As I made my remarks, Councilman Brimer and Montanaro nodded in agreement. After I returned to my chair, Councilman Montanaro made a statement, as did Vice Mayor Gott, that they believe that the evaluations are easily accessible, easily accessible being the key phrase, through a Sunshine Law request, and that is what the city should continue to do. In practice, the records are not easily accessible. Earlier this year, I made a records request for the evaluations of an employee. The request was for evaluations in any letter of commendation or discipline. The request was specific to ensure that no personal identifying and protective information, such as social security numbers, home addresses, et cetera, would be seen by me. I was very cognizant of the privacy laws and concern of the city. I made it clear that I only wanted to review the records as allowed under the Sunshine statute, and was not seeking copies of anything. In discussion with city employees and supervisors, I made it clear that I understood the privacy concerns and was not interested in insurance records, medical records, claims, tax information, et cetera, that would contain private and protected information. Even though I had to waiver the privacy claims from the person whose record I was seeking, which would have legally absolved Satellite Beach from any privacy issues, I made it clear and it was agreed that those issues should not come into play, considering what I was seeking. I was told the information would be available within a week. In a slightly longer-than-a-business week, I received an email from a representative of the city saying the cost of fulfilling the request would be a whopping $264. The email stated that the cost was due to copying, which I had not asked for, and the amount of labor to redact the information. I responded and asked specifically as to what would be redacted on an evaluation and questioned the cost. To this day, I have not seen a response to that question. Certainly, an evaluation or other performance documentation should not have private information on them to begin with, which would therefore preclude the need for redacting anything. The majority of the City Council agreed that the performance evaluations within the city employees are readily available and easily accessible. That belief was stated in a public forum. While I attempted to resolve this issue out of the public eye, the barrier of a large cost to obtaining legally accessible records shows that where the idea of readily accessible meets reality, readily accessible is a dream. The public representatives who believe in the accountability should be aware of the existence of a financial and fiscal barrier that precludes their directions and beliefs from being a reality.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Courtney, on the sign issue, can we take a look where that stands?
I'll look into both issues and get back to you at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Floor's still open for Citizens Comments. Here are none. Close Citizens Comments. Move on to Agenda Item 4, City Council Comments. Who would like to start? Mark?
The only thing I have, Mr. Mayor is we've got our Space Coast League of Cities meeting next week. I've been in discussions with Stu Glass regarding our Communities for a Lifetime Presentation, and I think between Courtney and I and Tallahassee, we're all ready to go, so we should be on target for that.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep, I did attend both Pension Board meetings on the 22nd. I'm not going to give an update, because I'm not the liaison. Although, at that meeting, because I can't hear, I used the headphones, and they're not working. So Andy's aware of that. Andy tried them on, and they're not working. He's still, we're in the process of getting new headphones, and so I wanted to get an update on that. Also, someone brought this to my attention, the supervisor of Election webpage is not up to date, as far as our data. It still shows Barbara Boyne as the clerk, and also does not show that we're having an election this year, so we need to get that updated. I think that's been brought to our attention a couple times, and someone brought it to my attention, and it's still not up to date. The sign issue and then the public record issue are going to be addressed. And also, too, although this is not a local Satellite Beach issue, I think many of you know that I'm a member of the Tyco, or the Warbird Museum up in Tyco, so if anybody has any aviation skills and would like to volunteer, the Tyco bells again down and repairing that engine. I was lucky enough to get a ride on the B-25 bomber, pretty amazing airplane, so if you do have time, become a member, and if you do have some experience, get up there, and let's get that Tyco bell back in the air.
Thank you. Okay, I have a few things here. Every Thursday, 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM, the Farmer's Market, Pelican Beach, to remind everyone. And also, the oyster mat making workshops, which I hear have been very, very successful. There is a Saturday, June 28th, from 10:00 AM to 11:30. Saturday, July 26th, the same time, and Saturday, August 23rd, the same time, at the David R. Schechter Community Center. And I think the turnout has been very good, and a good project to help the lagoon. And that's all I have to comment. Any further comment from council? And moving on to Agenda Item Number 5, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have, we've had a lot that has happened since I wrote this report, so I have some add-ons, so bear with me. I would like to congratulate the Fire Department for a very successful Public Safety Day that was up on Dogger's. I don't know if you were able to attend, but they had the helicopter out there, and bouncy houses. It was wildly successful. There was a lot of people there, and I want to thank you, thank the Police Department as well for having their volunteers out there. It was a very nice event. The Recreation Department, again, held a very successful oyster mat making workshop, and News 13 was there, and they were able, they texted me a picture with the news cameras there, and that was exciting to see, the interest from our news, you know, agencies at our little oyster mat making workshop. There are actually a lot of, quite a few people there, just as last time. I just wanted to remind everyone that the glass desk school was last week on Thursday, and, you know, kids are not going to be just riding around during school zone hours, but all day, so keep that in mind while you're driving. For informational items, the construction for the expansion of the sports park has actually begun, so if you drive out there, you can see that work going on now. We are going to be holding the next Town Hall meeting with Councilman Brimer for July, August, and September. Councilwoman Deenan was not able to hold hers this quarter, so I just wanted to remind you of that, and we'll be getting together with you for those dates. The 21-day salute to the flag will begin Saturday, June 14th, so if you haven't, if you want to volunteer for that and have not, please give Seehaw a call, and we'll let you, we'll get you in touch with the right people to do that. We've had some discussion in the past couple meetings regarding sea oats. We did call aquatic plants, and we do have sea oats available to plant, but we have to do that after turtle season is over. So when that is done, we will start to identify areas to be able to do that in, and we'll get back to you at that time, and that would be in November, okay? Our Auditor Selection Committee, our chairs in the audience, Mr. Osmer, has been hard at work. They've met a number of times, and they've released their RFP. So that RFP for our new auditor is due back on June 13th, so we will be able to bring you recommendations shortly thereafter. We had a really good meeting with FDOT today regarding A-1A, so hopefully, we will be able to get a number of our requested improvements in there. There are some things that we have to do beforehand, and we will likely be rushing some items on your agenda for the next two council, the next council meeting, and the next CRA meeting, to accomplish that. But I think we are in a good spot, and the timing's going to work out for us to get some things done. They were very receptive of our ideas and very gracious to help us out, so I think when we, when we get back to you, you'll be, you'll be happy. We did have two updates on two pieces of litigation that we have. One is our, we're, we have, we're in the middle of litigation with the Gorch issue. That litigation is currently in discovery. Unfortunately, they requested another extension on the answer to our discovery request, and that is going, we did grant that until June 20th. And then after that, we would, if they wanted another extension, we would request a hearing at that point to decide on that, just from the delays. But I think their reason for the extension was, you know, we should agree to these things out of compassion, so we did. We also have a update on the special magistrate proceeding with Deenan, Mr. and Mrs. Deenan. There is, the final order has been released, and the special magistrate has basically recommended that the Board of Adjustment decision remain intact, and he did not recommend, he didn't provide any recommendations for mediation. I did want to, that process for the special magistrate has closed out at this point, and the total cost for legal attorney fees is $22,102 for that process.
Our fees?
We attended the Economic Development Commission Board meeting today. It was a great day for us, because we were SNAP certified today. So we were able to achieve that, and we were able to obtain this beautiful little certification. So congratulations to John Stone, our building official, and David Abernathy, our fire marshal, for working so hard to get those down. We're going, we're going from a three-to-four-month approval process down to a week for our site plans, which is incredible. And the Economic Development Commission, with that process, made that available to us, because they have a whole board of people who use those processes every day, and they made those recommendations of what we needed to do to get there. So we were very grateful for the Economic Development Commission in providing that process to us and getting that recognition. And we join most of the larger cities. I think Cocoa Beach is SNAP certified. They got that last year, so we're one of the smaller cities that have obtained that certificate, and it was a lot of work, and I think everybody did a great job, so congratulations to all. So that's the end of my informational items. I do have one action item. Our, we are basi, we're, right now, we're preparing our capital improvement program, and it just keeps growing. And right now, we're kind of doing emergency maintenance, because we're reacting to things, since we haven't had a lot of money to do anything for, like, the past five years. So what we need to do is start getting your priorities. Last year, we presented you a plan, and now we need you to look at all of the things we have on our plate and help us start prioritizing them, because there's no way we can afford it all. So what we'd like to do is have a workshop to discuss those issues, and I'd like to propose Wednesday, June 25th, if that works for everyone.
Since it is an action item, I will need a motion, and then I'll open up for public comment.
Still moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Brimer. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Montanaro. Discussion from council?
Yeah, the motion is what?
For June 24th.
The June 24th, Wednesday workshop.
The 25th?
25th, excuse me. Any discussion from council?
We doing this at 6:00, 7:00?
I would say it's 7:00, normal time we have our meetings.
That's fine.
At this time, I'll open up for public comment. Here are none back to council. Any further council comments?
Oh, I have a question. What are the Gorch's fees, the city fees so far for the litigation?
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. We have a motion on the floor.
Oh, sorry.
A different item at this time. No further comment from council? Lenore?
I'm sorry. Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Brimer?
Yes.
Mayor Skene?
Yes, motion carries. So we'll have a workshop on the 25th, 7:00 PM. Any further comments to, or questions for the City Manager?
Yeah, that one question, what are the legal fees the city's incurred so far on the Gorch litigation?
That litigation, there was around $2,000 when we, before we switched from Mr. Langley's firm to our insurance firm. So our insurance firm is covering the cost of that litigation.
Is there some kind of deductible, or, no, go.
Any further questions for?
And when we get done with it, that's when I would, you know, let you all know what that cost was, and if we need to do any budget amendments to cover it, so.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
Courtney, just one question. Where are we at with closing out your performance review? I know we had it hanging out there, and you had to bring that to closure.
I was just going to bring it, and I know there's a lot of conversation whether they should be in the agenda or shouldn't, so maybe I can get your direction on that. What do you, how do you want to do that? I can bring it back to you at the next agenda, or whenever.
Do you have all of the five evaluations?
Yes, I just submitted it.
I think she just submitted it, yeah.
And that was really my question, wasn't it? If we got everything, then we can move forward, so.
So did you want them in the agenda, or do you want just a report of the totals, or how do you want them to proceed with that?
I think it's appropriate to have the totals. I don't think it's necessary to have the comments, per se, in the packets.
I believe in the past, we've always... I believe in the past, we've always had a report from the City Manager on the totals of each of the questions that were asked.
I'm comfortable with the totals, but if you want to include my comments or any, I'm fine with that. It doesn't make a bit of difference.
And I just, it doesn't bother me either way. I mean, I'm very, I'm fine with any way you want to do it.
What's your Agenda Item?
Okay.
Yeah, no, let it work, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment for our City Manager, or question? Okay. Here are none. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six. And at this time, the Florida League of Cities has a presentation to Councilman Montanaro and Kathy Till, please. The floor is yours. Dominic?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the Council, and I'll try to address everyone present, so maybe I'll turn a little bit.
I apologize.
I'll back you on that. But this is actually the favorite part of my job, is that I get to travel to the cities that I work with and recognize some of the outstanding advocates that we have through the Florida League of Cities. A little background, about two years ago, the League started a pilot project where we created regional advocacy teams. And these were teams of local elected officials that were tasked with helping to build relationships and, with our state legislators and to advocate. Usually, nobody has a problem hearing me. But they are tasked with building relationships with our state legislators as well as advocating on behalf of their cities and the cities around the state. When we decided to create a team over in the Space Coast region, Councilman Montanaro was certainly one of the first people that we decided to invite to be a part of this project. He and I go way back. We served on policy committees when I was an elected official myself, so I've had the opportunity and the pleasure of knowing, knowing him and getting to work with him on many occasions on many different issues, and so I knew he would be a tremendous asset to the team. And he has proven that to be true. I came over one day when I was inviting him to participate in that team, and I think we spent about two hours that day, if I remember, and he drove me around the city of Satellite Beach because I had not been here before. And he is an individual that I can tell you is incredibly proud of his community, and showed me some beautiful spots within the city, certainly spots that I have to come back and visit on vacation when I have a little more time to spend. But he also told me about the direction of the city and all of the wonderful things that are going to be coming your way. So you truly have a very strong advocate for the city of Satellite Beach. And because of that, a few years ago, the League started an award. We call it our Homeworld Hero Award. And this is the most prestigious award that the League gives each year to some of our elected officials around the state that have really gone above and beyond in advocacy during the 2014 legislative session. So it is my great honor and privilege to present the 2014 Homeworld Hero Award to Councilman Montanaro. And if you will indulge me, I will read what it says for everyone. For being a champion in the defense and protection of municipal homeworld, the Florida League of Cities presents the Homeworld Hero Award to Dominic Montanaro for outstanding leadership and continued support throughout the 2014 legislative session. You are an inspiration to the League and a homeworld hero for municipalities everywhere. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, my other job, I have to make sure.
Thank you very much, Kathy, for making the trip over here from a pop guy. You know, that's, it's quite a ride, and this is definitely something I wasn't expecting. But, you know, it's been my privilege to work with the Florida League of Cities. I mean, there's a, there's a great group of people that are elected officials from all over the state that interact in Tallahassee, you know, on our city's behalf. And, you know, Kathy is the coordinator for several of the advocacy teams in the state, and she does a great job of making us aware of, you know, the issues that we need to be concerned about that are statewide issues, along with our own issues that are, you know, important to our city. So she does a great job, and, you know, we owe a lot of gratitude to you for making sure that we go to Tallahassee prepared. And, you know, when I was there, I knew exactly who I had to see, I knew exactly when I had to be there, and I knew exactly what the issues were that I needed to articulate to our representatives. And it was through Kathy and the other advocates that work in Brevard County that made this stuff happen. So this is, thank you very much.
Dominic, I have a question. Did you show her the dog park?
I did, definitely. She got, she got, she got the big tour, Lorraine.
Okay.
She got the whole, the whole ball of wax. But thank you very much. This is, this is an honor.
Kathy, thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it. And Dominic, congratulations. At this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item Seven, and I have a presentation I'd like to make to Jane Mandeville. And Jane, will you please meet me up here? I'm going to talk loud, or you want me to talk into it?
Thank you. Today, we're here to honor a special person. In our city, through its history, volunteers have played a huge role in making Satellite Beach a better place. And we're honoring Jane today for her 21 years of dedicated service to the Beautification Board and to the city of Satellite Beach. And through those 21 years, Satellite Beach is a better place, a better-looking place for her dedication to our city. And she has gone well beyond anybody's duty to a city. She's put 21 years in, and this effort on behalf of the citizens, the employees of the town, and the City Council, we thank you for your service to this city.
Yeah, I just want to say, I was the liaison to the Beautification Board for seven years from 2002 to 2009, and I don't recall Jane missing meetings. She might have missed one or two, but she did an excellent job for the Beautification Board. So Jane, thank you very much. You deserve a break.
Thank you. This time, moving on to Agenda Item Eight. Police Chief Jeff Pearson to present a promotion. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess this is the position here with the microphone? Does this work? Robbie, please, come up. As was said earlier, and anyone who's had the opportunity to do this, this is my favorite part of the job. When I have the ability to stand in front of the citizens, the council, the mayor, the City Manager, and talk about the wonderful people that we have at the Satellite Beach Police Department, it's just, it's an outstanding feeling because you're just so proud, especially when you have the ability to not only talk about how well, but have the ability to promote someone to a position of responsibility who is just so incredibly deserving. The kind of person that Robbie is, he's been with us for six years, and from the first day, you can just tell. You know, when you, when you meet someone and they get on the job, they walk in the first day, they look good, they act right, they've got common sense, they're intelligent, they're compassionate. He had it all from the very, very beginning, and it didn't take a genius to look and say, you know, he's, he's going to continue to go places. And I was once told that a good manager finds good, solid, intelligent people and surrounds themselves with them. Well, that is him, and that's what I'm doing, is I'm surrounding myself with him. And I have the distinct pleasure to promote him to the position of patrol corporal. And just to give you a tiny, tiny bit of background, just part of me taking over, there was nine patrol corporals at the Police Department. Now we have three. And the philosophy difference is simple. My philosophy is a patrol corporal should be a position that has been earned, that is respected, and that has the ability to take over when a supervisor steps away. When a supervisor's not available, then we have someone who can step up, who makes good decisions, who's compassionate, who's intelligent, who knows what they're doing, and is going to keep the citizen safe and the city out of trouble. Because that's the most important part, is keeping a citizen safe, keeping the city out of trouble, and making sure that him and his folks go home safe. And he does all those things on a nightly basis. To be able to recognize that in front of you folks and our council and City Manager and Mayor is a distinct privilege. And Robbie, I can't tell you how much I appreciate what you do. I know this is a stepping stone for you, and I say that because if I'm lucky, you're going to be with, with us and with me for a long time, and I think this is probably just the beginning of, I think, will be a long and very good career. So thank you for what you've done so far, and thank you for what you're going to do in the future.
Thanks, Chief. Congratulations, Robbie.
Well, can I just ask a question? It says budgetary impact, 50 bucks a month. I hope, is that, is that money going into his, hopefully, in his paycheck to his family, or is that the load of cost?
I'm sorry, is that?
The 50 bucks.
Yeah, that's, that's the increase.
Good. So that's going in, congratulations. I was wondering if that was with, you know, benefits or anything.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, Agenda Number Nine has been postponed, and it is being mailed. And we'll move on to Agenda Item Ten. Discuss, take action on implementation of policy regarding mobile vending trucks at Pelican Beach Park. I believe, Carrie, this is your item?
Yes, thank you. You recall a couple of years ago, I attempted to do stationary food service at Pelican Beach Park. Because the company was stationary, and they were dedicated to try to be there seven days a week for about six hours a day, turns out they did not make the financial success that they had hoped for, and slowly, over about six or seven months, they eventually canceled their agreement with the city. We have the opportunity to look at that in a different way at this point, possibly allowing mobile food vendors or beverage vendors to simply travel through Pelican Beach Park like, like they do in the city now and at our special events. Not stationary, not there for a length of time, but there enough so if anybody on the beach wants to come up and grab a soda or an ice cream, they can do that, and then mobile vendor moves on to wherever else they're going to go next. So we have the opportunity to look into that and see if that would be something that Council would be interested in looking into, to do.
Okay, thank you. Open for Council comments and inputs.
How long do you anticipate these vendors would be there? A particular vendor?
If I was a vendor, I think I would go through my music playing or whatever, because, you know, that's what the ice cream trucks will do. If I didn't have anybody come up in five or 10 minutes from the beach, I need to move on because I need to make some money somewhere else. So I can't imagine that they would be there longer than about maybe 15 minutes. I think the key to a successful venture would be that we don't have 20 people doing that throughout the day. You just have a handful of people or...
And would that music be playing the whole time they're there?
That would be one of the conditions that we could look into.
Okay, because I'm, I'm very concerned, you know, that's really a residential area around there, and I know when that ice cream truck drives by with that child's tune playing, it's just driving past, and I'm thinking, how do people live with that noise? And I'm concerned about having this kind of noise in, at Pelican on a continuing basis and disturbing the neighbors that live across A-1A.
We actually had a complaint on that, so we were already considering that as part of the permitting requirements, which would just be a condition that, you know, once you get in and you play it for a couple of minutes where people understand that you're there, you just need to turn it off. But we also have Elaine here, Elaine Fee, and she, she was also wanting to look into this. So we might want to ask how long she would want to be there because that may give you a good idea of what they're looking for as a vendor, specific vendors. And I don't know if you want to bring her up to...
Yeah, we will bring Elaine up. I want to go through the Council first and let us ask questions that we have. Do you have any other questions? Okay. Dominic?
I think it's something that we should look at. I know that there's probably some things that we're probably going to need to tweak, but, you know, I was doing a Hook Kids on Fishing program at the library over at the sports park, and Elaine was there, and she was parked there, you know, doing her thing. And, you know, I will tell you, she was extremely professional in the way she did everything there. You know, she made sure her extension cords were covered, she made sure that there were no trip hazards. She was there for a longer period of time than she would probably be at Pelican Beach Park. But I think if we're looking at the caliber of individuals like her who are doing this to be professionals at it, you know, I think that there's room for this there. We just have to figure out how to do it.
I agree. I, I think it's a good idea to look into it. Some of the things, and I talked a little bit to Carrie yesterday, and this is not related to, you know, anybody wants to do it now, but how are we going to handle it? How many permits are we going to allow out for this particular operation at that park? Is it only at this park, or is it at other parks? Where would they park?
That would all be some things that we bring back to you, yeah.
Again, these are things that I think, in order to make an educated decision on how we do this, I think I'd like to see all that in front of me.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I mean...
And I think it's, it's great. I mean, you need something there, if it's done professionally, it's an added value to the citizens of the city and the people that use the park. So I'd just like to see, you know, a checklist of questions. And to Jim, can we limit the number of permits to this?
Yeah, Jim, I want to follow up on your question, Mr. Mayor. Regarding limiting the permits, is it possible, Jim, that we could do, let's say there's, we're going to do 15 permits. Is there a possibility that we could do a lottery system on that, that you would just draw out of that, that it wouldn't be 15? And in other words, you kind of rotate through, or would you...
I mean, there's different ways of dealing with it. We can back counsel as far as with a different option.
Okay. I, I think, again, I like everybody else, I agree with, that we should take a look at. I think there's some economic opportunity for people, as well as for our residents, to have some services at the beach. But I'd kind of like to know how, you know, other cities do it too, and just kind of get all that information so that we can put together a good project if we're going to do this. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I would definitely like to see this looked into like we did before. Unfortunately, we did an RFP, and it, it kind of, it kind of flopped, not only for, I think it was actually a very rainy, miserable spring and summer, and it just didn't, didn't work out. You know, my kids are not, they never get over ice cream, I don't think, but they're kind of at the age where snow cones aren't as exciting anymore, but we literally would drive them up to picnic tables just because they wanted to go where the snow cone machine was, because it, you know, it provides a service that the kids and the families really want. And then I just have one question about, in here, it says Section 4213, "No person shall stand on the street or highway and solicit or attempt to solicit employment, business, or other contribution from occupants of any vehicle." Does that mean it prohibits mobile vendors from going through the streets? So, so right now, a mobile vendor can't go down the street and sell ice cream or snow cones? I think that...
You can't park.
Oh, you can't park? Okay, but you can ride through and stop? Okay, just wanted to check.
And I think what, what we were looking for was like, do you like the idea? Is, and is this something you all would, because we don't want to, we're going to go back and, you know, create all these policies and procedures and then we'd get here and you guys say, no way. So if you like the idea, then we will come back and, and look into some of the concerns. And if you have any concerns, and you think of them later, you know, obviously, please give me a call so we can include them and make sure that we address them. But I, I think when we were looking at, you know, Elaine Fee, she's, her business was kind of the model that we were kind of looking at because she does do a lot of the community things for our community. And, you know, we were hoping to just add her, her services to Pelican Beach Park, and in doing that, open it up to any other individuals that, you know, would, would be wanting to do it. But again, we would look at, you know, making sure that there's not, you know, a row of vendors, you know, blocking parking and stuff like that.
I just, one thing is, I just want to make sure, for the city's sake and everyone, that the process to pick who gets the, let's call it permits at this time, that it's fair. I mean, how, you know, I think we got to be careful on how we go about setting that process up. I mean, you know, I think we got to be careful on how we go about setting that process up.
Yeah.
And I'd like you to look at all angles to it, so at least we see them.
See, we, initially, I wanted to just, you know, do a contract, but then we realized that how many other people were actually wanting to use that area. So, there was actually quite a few.
Okay.
So, we were, we'll be brainstorming on how to solicit those, and that's part of what we wanted to do, is be soliciting the vendors.
Okay.
Yeah, I think another, just to throw it out there, I think another, if we're going to look at that, you know, we should look at not having five snow cone vendors. Let's spread it out, so we have hot dogs and, you know, let's not try to be fair with five different vendors that are selling the same thing.
We can do that.
I mean, we need to be, have a variety.
Sure.
Can I ask another question? Since you brought up Elaine, I mean, Elaine has been wonderful to the community with the lead teams and coupons, and just being out there supporting all of them, then donating back to our folks who sometimes have to contribute to, you know, square boards and bases and other things, and it helps them put the bill for that. But what I've seen is that you have somebody who wants to do it the proper way, and then we have people that are doing it anyway.
Right.
So, there's a person who wants to do it in a proper way, who doesn't go into the park yet, we have people that go into the park and run through there anyway, so.
And again, yeah, we need the rules, we've got to be able to have, enforce them, and to be fair on how the permits are handed out or obtained.
And we would be doing, you know, we would be kind of structuring everything in concert with all of the department heads, you know, because I know the police department wanted to see if we could include background checks, you know, things like that, that parents would be concerned about, and, you know, and obviously, public works would be concerned about where is it going to go, and, you know, is there going to be any cleanup, stuff like that. So, we will, we will put all that together, and I have one recommendation, bring it back to as soon as we can.
Courtney and I were batting around, like, the enforcement issue, providing a service. So, am I going to really call the POPO or the police and say, "Hey, this snow cone machine vendor doesn't have a sticker on it"? You know, you could put a sticker on it. What am I going to do that after I get my snow cone? So, how do you, you know, it's kind of a funny...
Well, they drive through Pelican Beach Park all day long, you know, our police department, and, but that would be a way to identify them, and that's what other communities do.
Yeah, with a sticker or something.
Give them a permitting sticker to put in their window and make sure that they have all that, all those requirements. And part of it would be, you know, requiring a business tax receipt and making sure that all that's done, so.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Elaine, I'd like to give you the floor first, if you'd like it.
Elaine Fee, citizen. Thank you, guys, for considering this. I have had my truck here, it's my fourth year, and basically, well, I came from New Orleans, and I've lived in Florida now longer than I lived there, and I can never understand why we didn't have snowballs. I always wanted to do snowballs. So, when I had the opportunity, it was that when my kids had graduated, and I was a big volunteer in the community for their whole school career, and so I decided it would probably be better for me to do that and sit around just drinking it. But it's a lot of fun, it keeps me involved with the kids, and I get to give back to the community, I'm like Dominic, so when he saw me out there, I was actually doing the soccer games, and I do donate back to that organization, and that's why I do it, I like to give back. As far as Pelican Beach, when we, first when it went up for proposal, I was new in the business, and I was hesitant about how to fill out the proposal, because we're looking for a certain amount, and I just knew, you know, doing some investigating with Kerry, you know, I believe it's either 200, 250 parking places, and about 200 of those are really for the pavilions, so you're talking about 50 parking spots for beachgoers, beachgoers at the beach, they're sitting at the beach, they're not really coming up to the beach. So, it is really hard to be there for a long time. Driving through there, right, you know, it might be maybe 15 minutes or something if nobody comes up, but it might be beneficial maybe just to sit for an hour, because some people do see you when they walk to the beach and maybe come back, because I've been at other beaches, I, at one time, did have the contract for Lori Wilson Beach and Cocoa Beach, but I preferred to stay over here, so I did not renew my contract with them. So, I could see maybe at most, maybe half hour to an hour, somebody sitting out there. Now, with food trucks being the whole craze, obviously, I'm sure you're having some people inquiring about that, and that was something, I was always interested in food trucks, and they're starting to get around this area, but I don't know how many of them really ride around, and they would have to probably more set up something. And I want, and Councilwoman Gott, I understand about the music, that was one thing, when I got my truck too, that I didn't want to have that, "Do-do-do-do-do-do-do-do-do", ears hang low music. So, mine is actually Caribbean steel drums, Little Mermaid music, so it is a little bit different. But I am also very conscious anywhere as I go of the environment and things like that, so I certainly would be aware of that and try not to disrupt anybody anywhere. That's, people tell me, "Why don't you go by the baseball field, you know"? Well, they have a concession stand, so I, you know, I do try to be very conscious and aware of the environments that I'm in and things like that, and certainly, you know, some kind of signaling that the ice cream trucks here, from what I understand, I grew up in Louisiana, and we didn't really have a beach or anything like that for an ice cream truck, but from what I understand from people more up north where they had it come, I guess they'd go and ring a bell or something at the crosswalk or whatever, so that was a signal that the ice cream truck was there, so maybe something like that would work. I do understand, and I would ask too, that as far as, you know, requirements and things like that, you know, having them have a business tax receipt in the city, because obviously that benefits us, you know, I do, I am licensed, I am permitted through the health department, that would be another thing also...
That's the reason why we would want that, yeah.
Right, checking all that, and, you know, and I do pay sales tax, which comes back to our city, and that's really important, that's the whole point of doing this. So, I do appreciate that. I think as far as anything else, that's really all the kind of information I have about it. I really would like to be able to go through there, and not going to make a fortune, but it is nice, and you do see a lot of people, once they know you're there, they'll know, you know, that, "Hey, we'll come by there sometime as well."
On standard, one second, any questions you'd like to ask, council? Okay, thank you very much for input, and I know you'll be working with...
Be working with us, right.
Together. Thank you.
Floor's still open.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the city's recognition of the fact that the park is there to be enjoyed by everybody, but also Kerry's always been very mindful of the fact that we do want to live near the park, but not experience the park every day. And I really appreciate your mindfulness that not all, most events are precluded from having amplified music, even in an air-conditioned house with the windows closed, if there is amplified music, a band or a DJ, you don't really hear the enjoyment of the music, you hear the bass. And just hearing the bass is really not that enjoyable. So, I really appreciate your mindfulness that the condos to the south, the condos to the north, and the houses to the east, or to the west, are also in your mind when you're making decisions like that. So, I think it's a good balance, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Floor's still open, yes, sir.
Jerry Hudson, resident. No one's going to be speaking on this. My question is, is this going to be limited to just food vendors? Because I can see somebody maybe wanting to, if the concept of not being able to have a trailer on the park, is that totally out of the question? I'm not asking for myself, I'm just asking these questions. Because I can see someone saying, "Hey, maybe it'd be a good idea to sell beach chairs, or rent beach chairs or beach umbrellas," you know. Or the other thing about having, if you're still going to have, sorry about that, if you're still going to have the vendor park a trailer there, are they going to be paying more than someone who's just going through? Also, like in a lot of grocery shopping centers, you have something, some stores that get exclusive rights to something. Like, I'm selling hot dogs, hamburgers, and coats. I don't want any trucks going through selling hot dogs, hamburgers, and coats. That's something else to consider when we look at this. And was I correct in hearing that there are no longer any trailer vendors at Pelican Beach Park?
Yes.
Okay, because, and when did this end?
Kerry?
Last October, August, September, October.
Okay, because I've seen a red trailer at the Pelican Beach Park recently.
Yeah, yep.
Jerry, on your, to answer one of your questions there, this was not, this was to be a drive-through type of...
I understand that. What I'm saying is...
That's, we're going to write...
You know, that's the thing, though, but if you still have someone who wants to put a trailer there and have serve food, say, from 10 to four every day, you know, and he also wants to sell ice cream, it's like, he may have a problem with vendors driving through selling ice cream. That's just something to consider.
Thank you very much. Public comments still open? Here are none, close the public comment portion. Back to council, direction to staff?
Yes.
Yeah, just proceed. Courtney, come back with what you can pull together with Jerry and go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, Discuss/ Take Action on the Florida Department of Transportation Signal Maintenance Compensation Agreement. Public Works Director, Alan.
Good evening. I can't say that five times fast.
That's why everybody's hearing that.
Before you this evening is the redo of the, well, for one year, while they work on a new contract, contract that we've been working with since 2003. In 2003, the Florida Department of Transportation decided to start paying public entities throughout the state for, to take care of the signals that they were on state roadways. Back in the day, I think, put my glasses hand here, I can tell you exactly, when it first started, the city was getting a whopping $1,818 for all of our signals. The contract at that time was built, built in a 3% per year increase into that, so now our revenue from the state is $12,336 a year. And over the last five years, we averaged it, and we've spent an average of about $4,200 or $4,100 per year in maintenance of the signal, so we're making out, you know, pretty well. Although we have spent, now, we have spent $8,000 in 2010 on a cabinet, and we do run into times when, you know, we put out a little bit more money, like during hurricanes and things like that. So, I think over the, over the entire length of the contract, we've actually, it's probably a wash, I think, you know, we've come out pretty even. But I would recommend signing the agreement, they're going to rework the contract to include a lot of new signalization that has been incorporated into the ITS system for the state. So, they want to get input from all the municipalities, and so hopefully, I will be able to be involved in that conversation throughout the year. But like I said, I would recommend signing this agreement, this is for 1415, and we'll see how it comes out in the next fiscal year or next year.
Alan, one quick question here. This is maintenance.
Yes.
If the mast arm goes in a storm, who pays for that? Is that a city?
If the mast arm goes in a storm, there's a few different avenues that can be approached. Yeah, the city's ultimate responsibility to take care of it.
Through this particular...
Through this, through this particular agreement. However, we do have the Federal Highway Administration who will, is basically the FEMA of the roadways, the state and federal roadways, which A-1A and South Patrick are a part of, so they would be able to help us there as well. Yes, you know, we'd have to insure them as best we can, and, you know, there's no doubt about that, but, you know, we have to take care of them anyway, and it's better that we get something for it than just, you know, turn the money down.
Thank you. Questions?
So, this is just an agreement that's going to take us through the end of next year, and you're, they're working on a longer-term type agreement, is that what's going on?
Absolutely, yes. The agreement that we had prior to the one that they have here to be signed was originally, was from 2003.
Well, let me ask this, in the negotiations in this new agreement, are there going to be some contingencies that might be put into place for mast arms, so that we can, I mean, because, you know, like, right now, we're getting $12,000, and if you had to replace a mast arm, even with, even with money coming in from FEMA, it's a, it's a big-ticket item. We're going from a, you know, a light that's hanging in the middle of the roadway that might cost X number of dollars, to something that's going to cost 10 times the X number.
Well, the boss has already given me direction in that, in that area. But we, yeah, we talked about that, you know, when we were talking about the agreement, and that's one of the areas that she was very strong about, that that's where we want to push, you know, to make sure that if we do go the mast arm direction, that we're, you know, we have some kind of coverage there as well, so.
Okay, well, I'm all for moving forward with this, I'm just, I want to make sure that we cover our bases as we enter into the new agreement, and we do whatever the wording is that we're going to do.
Absolutely.
We're mindful of the costs.
Absolutely.
Further questions?
Alan, I just want to call your attention to this, to be on the lookout, the letter from FDOT says that this agreement will run from July 1, 2014, to June 30 of 2015, and yet on the form it's filled out, it's got a different starting date, October 1, 2014, through November, through September 30 of 2015. So, be aware of that when the final agreement is filled out, to make sure that's consistent.
Well, and that may have something to do with the fiscal year, our fiscal year and their fiscal year being different. Their fiscal year is July to, June to July, and our fiscal year is October to September, so that may have something to do with the agreement.
But what I'm saying is, it's stated two ways in here, and they both can't be true.
Right, okay. Yeah, I understand.
Further council comments?
Just one thing, I know this is something Alan and I know Chief has been involved with too. You remember the storms and coming down A-1A, and those lights were three feet off the ground, it was totally black out there, and Chiefs officers were going around and cutting the things down so that somebody come along and...
No, they weren't. I was in a bucket, cutting them things.
Yeah, it was, because they were literally this high off.
Oh, yeah.
It would have killed anybody driving along A-1A. So, I mean, it's one of those things, one of those things, if we get a storm, we're going to get those costs, there's absolutely no, because those things just start dropping off the lines, so.
Right, right. Yeah, I remember, Aaron, every one of them, we, Robert said, Reno and I, driving down A-1A, just cutting them down and pulling them off the side of the road.
And the police officers were trying to keep people off the road, because somebody's going to drive right into the windshield of one of those things, so it was a mess.
Yep, laded stop signs and...
So, anyhow. I move that we approve the FDOT Signal Maintenance Compensation Agreement.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Breimer. Any further discussion from council? Here are none from council, open up for public comment.
Charlie Hudson, resident. Question about this, not a really question, but a comment. What I'd like to see is that the maintenance cost to the city be broken out during this next fiscal year, to actually see if we're spending more than we're getting from FDOT for maintenance on this system. If it's a case where we're spending more than we're getting from FDOT, it's not fiscally responsible to sign this agreement in the future.
Jerry, I think if you don't sign this agreement, then the total cost falls on us, is that correct?
Well, Mayor, I think we just did that.
Yeah.
He just reported that we usually spend around $4,000...
All I'm saying is, we're getting something if we sign, and if we don't sign, and there's a disaster, then we're in charge of 100% of it. So, with this agreement, we're getting some of the dollars for maintenance.
But he also, also reported that, that we usually spend around $4,000 to $8,000 a year in maintenance, and we're getting 12. So, he went back, how many years did you go back?
I went back five.
Five years, the last five years.
Well, to me, the number sounded vague, like he was just pulling them out of the hat, not necessarily pulling out the hat.
Pulled them out of the...
They sounded very vague to me.
I can tell you, '09...
Another thing about the mast arms, if they're being, you know, I assume they're rated for a certain wind speed, and if the only reason they should fall down is if the wind speed exceeds that, or if there's corrosion or something like that, so, you know, that's something maybe you need to go check with FDOT and the city, and go over and inspect for corrosion, and basically say, "Okay, this, what can we do here?"
Thank you very much. Questions? Public comments is still open. Here are none, bring back to council, any further discussions?
I have a question. Do we cycle around and inspect everything?
We actually don't. The county does, but the county does inspect them once a year regardless, and mast arms are required to be inspected, I think, twice a year. So in that, in this agreement, that is part of this agreement, is to make sure that if you don't inspect, and if you, if there's neglect, that they won't do anything for you, and neither will FHWA. So it is, you know, incumbent upon you to make sure that you do your inspections and, you know...
Who from the county inspects?
Brevard County Traffic Operations.
We've contracted with them for a number of years so far.
Yes, at least since '03.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? We have a motion on the floor. Hearing none, Lenore.
Councilman Dean.
Yes.
Councilman Otero.
Yes.
Councilman Breimer.
Yes.
Officer Boggs.
Yes.
Eric Teague.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number 12, Discuss Take Action on the City Attorney's Attendance' attendance at the 33rd Annual Seminar of the Florida Municipal Attorneys Association, July 24 through to 26.
We have this budgeted, and we, but for some reason, we bring it to you after your approval. It's, I think the last year, we had, we're hoping that you would just know that it wasn't in the budget, and you would, that would be, it's a budgeted item, so we normally wouldn't bring you back budgeted items when we, especially for travel and training. But we couldn't remember whether we did that or not, so we put it on the agenda, but it is budgeted. Next year, we would just request that we just, you know, that would just be given. We do this for Mr. Beetle to Go every year. Pardon?
Since it isn't a budgeted item and is already there, and it's an approved budget, do we really need to take a vote on it? I mean, it's approved already.
For some reason, you do that every year.
Yeah, we always have.
I don't know why, but...
Do we have the right amount in the budget? Does it cover the cost? We've already decided.
I'll make, if we needed a motion, I'll make a motion for...
We don't need it.
It's in the budgets.
We've already put the budget.
Can we just won't bring it back from now on, if you don't mind, and just, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Remember that, right?
Any further discussion from council? Hearing none.
We're taking no action.
We're taking no action.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 13, items for our next June 18, 2014 council meeting. And also, just to let everyone, remind everyone, if this is still correct, the July 2 meeting is, we don't have a July 2 council.
That's correct. Your first meeting in July is canceled.
Right. So if you'd please look over the agenda items, is there anything you want added to it? Please get with the city manager on this issue.
Do you want me to go through these, or did you?
You can, if you'd like.
No, I don't need. I will be adding my review. That would be one thing that we're adding. And we'll be adding the A-1A item, but that's it. Everything else, the only thing that you probably wouldn't recognize is the interlocal agreement with Brevard County School Board. That's your, the new updated school concurrency agreement we've been working on for two years. So we also very, we all patted each other on the back after that vote. We're bringing it to you for approval. That's it.
Thank you. Any other input on the agenda for June 18? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Courtney.
Moving on to Agenda Item 14, Discuss Take Action on Policy Regarding Board Committee Members Absences.
Thank you, Mayor. We had, we had been asked by you to bring back some recommendations on this issue, and part of that was bringing back the Board's Policies and Procedures Manual, which we're still working on. So we thought we would go ahead and get some direction from you on the absence issue. And we also provided you with a book of all the updated ordinances and bylaws of, I think it's just the ordinances, right? Yes, of the boards, so that you could go through those and see if there's anything in there that you wanted to change or update. But right now, we currently have, some examples of other cities include statutory boards have provisions within the statutes regarding attendance, and we know that. But the, a lot of communities have provisions in their establishing ordinances regarding attendance. There's, I know the city that I used to work for had a attendance policy where each board, you could not miss three consecutive meetings in a row, and you had to, within a six-month period. And you also had to be there at the end of the year, 60% of the meetings held. And that was basically to keep people from continually not showing up to meetings. And the process was, the chair of that board, when it was recognized that people, a board member was, you know, missing meetings, would then write a letter to council letting them know that, and then council would make a decision whether they wanted to remove that member or not. Or send them a, you know, a little letter saying, hey, can you show up to the meetings? And that actually worked quite well. There was always a good attendance record in the boards that I worked with over there, so.
Thank you. Okay, council comments?
Yes. I've been going through the materials that I've worked on for a long, long time regarding the handbook for the city boards, and I've gone through all of the code regarding any of the boards that are covered by code. I've looked at all of the charters where boards have charters. I've looked at all of the bylaws where boards have bylaws. It probably goes without saying that when you have one entity governed by multiple documents, there are conflicting requirements for a given board. And what I am going to be doing, when I finish this, is bring this really complete set of information to the council, and I will be making recommendations. And one of the things I'm going to recommend is that, to the extent that the city attorney is okay with it, I think we need to get these city boards out of the code. And what I would like to see us do is to take this handbook and make it the official governing document regarding boards. Every bit of information about every board that we have will be in this particular document. And we should have this information in one place, because just as sure as you start putting it in two or three documents, two or three governing documents, you're going to have conflicting provisions. And so, and a lot of the stuff that's in these codes is just repetitive and unnecessary. And I'm having a section in the handbook for provisions that would apply to all of the boards, so that you don't have to take it and repeat it for every single board. And then where there is information that is pertinent to just a particular board, then that will go in that section regarding that particular board. In terms of attendance requirements, I looked through all of the materials that I could find, and this is what the picture is right now on attendance requirements. For, and this is from the city code, for the Board of Adjustment, a member is automatically removed when they have missed more than two regular meetings during any period of 12 consecutive months, unless they have, unless they have been excused by the chair. And again, these provisions are not consistent, and we need to make a consistent policy. And one that does appear in a couple places, and I think makes sense, is that in order for someone to have an excused absence, they need to contact either the city or the chair of the board before the meeting, and let them know that, whatever their reason is. And then the chair makes the determination as to whether or not a meeting is an excused absence. I mean, an absence is an excused one. And then for Planning and Zoning Board, it's the same provision, that if they have more than two unexcused absences during any period of 12 consecutive months, again, unless they have been excused by the chair, then they're gone. For our Code Enforcement Board, it's automatic removal if the board member fails to attend two out of three consecutive meetings, again, without cause, without the chair's approval. In the provisions that we have for the Board of Adjustment, it does define what constitutes the basis for an excused absence, and that needs to apply to all of our boards. And it spells it out pretty thoroughly, and makes it easy for a chair to make a call as to whether or not it should be excused. In addition, in someplace else for Salt Lake Beach I have here, it's an automatic removal if a board member misses three regular meetings, three regular meetings during any 12, any period of 12 consecutive months. And I also found something from the city of Melbourne, their policy is that the chair, the chair will notify the council in writing when a board member has the following unexcused absences, and that is if he misses three consecutive meetings, or three out of five consecutive regular meetings, then they're automatically gone. So there is some variation, and I'll be pulling all of this together in the handbook, so that we can establish one same policy and apply it equally across the boards.
Suggestion, because you have, you've been working on this for a long time, and I'm sure each of us have input to it. To me, this is way too big of a ordeal not to have a workshop on it. I know we don't like to tie up time, but, you know, there's no way we're going to do this, discussing it at a council meeting, and I think we need to try to, what I don't want to happen is continually being pushed later and later. And I think it's probably going to take a couple meetings rather than one, because I know there's going to be some legal questions that Jim's going to have to answer concerning some state regulations on certain boards. So my thing is, is to pick some dates that we could at least start the process. And then we take the process, and everybody can have input on it. When you turn in what you have, there's going to be other people that have input to it. And I think we just do it from a workshop. And that way, it's dedicated to that particular item.
I agree that we need a workshop. I disagree with trying to set a date now, because I can't tell you right now, and this is going to be finished, but I will tell you that what I will be bringing to the council is a very thorough presentation of what we have, what I'm recommending, and what needs to be, what parts of the code need to be amended, and how. I'm suggesting language, and to take this now and start piecemealing it is going to be counterproductive to my efforts to try to present a unified document.
Can I, can I comment? You know, I've been asking for this handbook to be done for months, an agenda item, and I don't remember the date, but there was a commitment to have this done at the last meeting, and it's not done. So, you know, the council agreed to commit to this meeting to have this done, absolutely. We all did. And I'm getting very frustrated with it. If, I'm on council, I'm an elected official, if I request something to be on the agenda, it should be on the agenda, and then we all agreed to commit to have it done on June 4. So we need to move forward with this. This is, you know, I don't ask for much to be on the agenda. I've asked for this to be on the agenda over and over and over again, and it needs to be done.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, and I know I asked for it to be on the agenda for the 4th, to pick a date, so we could start bringing this to...
So we, it was, the handbook was supposed to be back.
Excuse me. So I really want to make sure we get this going. Your suggestion to it.
I think, I know that, I think it might be actually beneficial if we have a workshop before you start drafting. And the reason why I say that is because there are some legal questions you're going to need answered regarding structure, because I'm already seeing some things that we'll have to sit down on. And it might be a good idea if we do that, like in the next, maybe eight months, to have a workshop?
I just think it's a workshop issue. It might be more than just one. This is important, I think it's been there.
Do you get the direction on what the absences are, what, you know, what policy directions that everybody wants on these certain issues? And we can identify the issues prior to the workshop.
Dominic?
I think, and I understand what you're saying. I think, based on the fact of some of these things being in here, and they're quasi-judicial boards, I think we might want to ask Jim, so that we know when we come to whatever this workshop is, that Jim is prepared...
Right.
...to give us information on, is there any statutory things that come into play, so that we know that right off the bat? And then when you're preparing whatever you're going to prepare, you at least know that those particular things, because I remember when we did the LDRs, I mean, there was stuff in every part of the code that pertained to five or six different things, it was spread out all over, the same way that you're saying that this is that way. So I would think that we would want to know what the legal things are that we need to stay, you know, focused on, that are going to be issues that we need to know upfront. And if we can start there, then we can at least give you some guidance.
Well, as I have been going through this and writing this and pulling materials together, I've been identifying areas that will need the city attorney's input. But again, we can do this as one concentrated effort, rather than trying to grab stuff out of the blue and try to figure out what we're going to do. You'd be putting the cart in front of the horse if you do that. When you see what I am working on and will finalize, you will see that if you wait until you see this whole package, it will, the process will be much more organized, and it will move a lot faster.
Councilman Breimer?
Mr. Mayor, what I was suggesting, and this is a thought, Lorraine, is to have this come back at the one, we have one meeting in July? Is that what we're having? Is have you come back in July with a progress report on where you're at, and give us a timeline for moving this forward? That'll give you a chance, another five, six weeks to really pull this together, and then we can, we can figure out at the end of July, where we can go, what we can fast-track, what we can't, at that point. I think of a vision for the workshop would probably come together. Would that work to getting you to where you need to be for, moving us forward at that point? Okay, that's my thoughts.
And I might even have the whole product by then.
Okay, that's...
But I can't promise right now. One of the things that, you know, has been taking my time, fortunately, I made pretty good notes, but I've been trying to get my mind back into the process that I stopped two and a half years ago, so to pick it up again and to continue.
Excuse me. It's not open for public comment yet. I understand, and I'm not accepting it this time until we open it for public comment. We're still discussing it on council.
I would rather see a workshop sooner than later, just as the city manager's recommended. Again, we're kind of kicking this can down the road. I've been requesting this over and over for our last meeting that we discussed it, when we all committed, actually, I didn't commit, you all committed, saying it was done, and Ms. Scott was almost done with this, it was going to be on this agenda. Needs to be done sooner than later.
One of my questions is, when we get this packet, would you rather, and I would rather see a workshop sooner than later for this reason. You're going to, we're going to get this packet of information. Whether everybody agrees on everything that's in there, would you rather know our feelings beforehand as you're putting it together? Therefore, you're working to an end that we all have agreed to put the information in. And, I mean, I'm in a feeling, I think we need a workshop, and to get it going, to see where you're at, for you to help educate us in what the process you're doing. And I'm not saying what you're doing, we wouldn't say, yeah, great. But I also know people, like, has different opinions, are going to give those different opinions, and is it better to do that during the process than after the process? So that's why I think a workshop is in order. And then, and we start picking dates, and we keep moving forward with this.
And what I'm trying... And, and what I'm trying to convey is that, if you wait until you get this document as a, as a document, um, there will be less, uh, what you will do, you will have a basis to start with, to decide whether or not you are satisfied with the provision, rather than starting out cold and everybody coming up with their ideas of, of what something should be.
Okay. Let me ask this. Mark made a suggestion, we do not, obviously, it's not gonna get done on June 18th, the 25th of June, we have a workshop. We're not gonna be here July 2nd. I wanna pick a date, to be honest, I wanna get this, to help you have a date to get this going. If we looked at July 23rd, to have a workshop on this, does that give you ample time to get to a point where we can have, and it's down, and we're gonna do it on the 23rd, with whatever information we have? Is that a... Councilman Deanan, is that, look at your calendar?
I'm, I'm just really disappointed, there was a commitment to have it done.
I'm asking right now, is that...
That's fine, but, you know, inappropriate. I think it's very inappropriate.
Can you meet a workshop? Is that a workshop? Staff, is that adequate time?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. At this time, I'll open up for public comments on this agenda item.
What date would you suggest?
July 23rd.
We have a, a special city council meeting on the budget.
Not on the calendar.
I'm sorry. Okay, you're on the floor.
Terry Hudson, resident. Um, I thought this agenda item was for absences of the, of boards and committees.
Yes. It's, it's all...
And the point, the point of order I tried to make was, it seemed like it started to get into this whole big, uh, city manual discussion, as opposed to just absences of committees and boards.
It was supposed...
That was my point of order.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
And it got way out of order.
No, it was all tied in. Thank you. Public comments still open.
What would we do if we didn't have Councilwoman Gott available to write this document? Question number one. Number two, ultimately, whose responsibility is it to create this document? Is it staff, management? Okay. Number three, apparently, you all contacted some cities, is there not a boilerplate out there that you could put together?
Yes, ma'am.
Titusville, Melbourne, Rockledge, I mean, that's something to think about.
Thank you. The direction will be given by city council to staff when we have our workshop on this. And I have talked to Courtney, it's not a boilerplate, because every city is slightly different. And this will be for the City of Satellite Beach, when we get this done.
Can I just address, real quick, the...
Yep.
The, the city staff could do this, but it would take us a whole lot longer. We just don't have the time to put this stuff together. So that's why, you know, it's good to have a volunteer that's willing to do this for us, because you'd be waiting another six months for this, because we just don't, we don't have the staff to do long-term projects like this right away, like what Lorraine is doing. Um, and I also wanted to suggest, maybe we move that meeting to the 24th, because we do have a budget workshop on the 23rd.
24th.
I mean, I...
Check, everybody scheduled? Okay.
Everybody good?
Yeah. I, I just wanna get, to be very honest, I wanna get this going, and, uh, put it to rest. Okay, any further discussion on Agenda Item 14?
Thank you, sir.
You're set for the 24th.
24th of July. And I don't wanna change it, I mean, I wanna set this and go. Okay? Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 15, appointments to boards. We have some reappointments here, and...
I'll make a motion to reappoint Richard Ralph to the Code Enforcement Board, term ending 8/1/2017. Okay, and he's individual...
I, I would like to do him individually, I've got some questions.
Okay. So you want a second on that?
Please.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Bremer. Um, any discussion?
Which one is this?
The first one, Richard Ralph.
First one, Richard Ralph, Code Enforcement Board.
Any discussion? Hearing on Lenore?
Councilman Deanan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goddard?
Yes.
Councilman Bremer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Eric Tina?
Yes, motion carries. The next one, Mark Johnson, I have a question on it, and that's why I wanna, again, I know we don't have any, has anybody called him and made sure he wants the reappointment? Is it, because he's missed, he's only attended four out of nine meetings. So I wanted to just make sure that he has been called.
He has been called.
And he still wanted to?
His question, whether or not, um...
I think four, I'm not if I added, right?
If Christina, um, wouldn't want to move up as a regular member, if Christina would want to move up as a regular member, but we already have a, a regular vacant position, there's no plan on moving her up, so...
Okay. Again, my, my question was...
If she's willing to serve.
He was, I mean...
But he recommended the alternate, he moved up.
Council wishes here?
Well, if he's interested in serving, and Christina's interested in moving up to a, um, a regular position, um, I'm not adverse to putting him back in as an alternate, and I'll make that motion that, uh, so we're not rea, we can, what we're gonna do is, we're going to switch Christina to the seat that ends 7/2017 as a regular seat, and switch Mark out to the seat that's the alternate seat, if it comes up 10/216.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Bremer. Any further discussion from council?
Yeah, I, um, Mark Johnson has a, has a, missed four meetings and attended five, and, um, Christina LaRue has missed three and attended two, so her attendance is worse than Mr. Johnson's.
Has she, she indicated that she would, would sit in a regular s, seat? I mean, when we talk to these people, do we explain to them that we need them to come? I mean, when you're talking to Christina, and you're talking to Mark, do you indicate that council wants you to attend these meetings?
I don't emphasize the attendance requirement, but I can begin to do that.
I think, I, I mean, I think it's imperative that we start getting that message to these people, because if they're serving on a board, they need to be there. If they can't be there, they need to let you know they can't be there.
Sometimes your alternates will think that since they're an alternate, they don't need to be there, you know? So, that, that could be also part of the, the issue. And once they become a full member, they, their attendance might get better, because they're able to vote.
One of the things about attendance, and this is why I, I wanted this brought up, is the attendance is not very good for these boards, and we have a lot of vacancies. And this is why I've been harping to, you know, have the handbook, so that if people are aware that when there is a meeting, there's a process to go through, if you have an excused absence or a non-excused absence, because it's unacceptable not to have a quorum. Um, you know, and so, here we are now, looking at people's attendance, you know, months, months later, when I've been asking and asking to have this looked at before, and to take these boards seriously. Overall, the attendance is horrible.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor?
And a second.
And a second. Further discussion?
Councilman Deanan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goddard?
Yes.
Councilman Bremer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Tina?
Yes.
I do think that it would be appropriate for the city to send either a letter, or if we have their email address, uh, an email to all board members, on all the boards, and set, you know, just remind them, uh, that their attendance is expected, and, and to, to let the alternates know that their attendance is expected.
Uh, I can do that on, under my letterhead, and let them know that this is an issue that council is discussing, so please be mindful of your absences and, and try to attend your board meetings, I can do that.
And, and also, I think when we do send the letter for if they wanna be reappointed and so forth, that attend, you know, let them know that attendance is important, and, you know, if they're having trouble, that it gives them a way out if they're not...
You have everyone's, we have everyone's email, and it'd be easier to do it via email, and just a timely reminder.
That's probably what I'll do, I usually just email a PDF letter.
Okay, good. Yeah, the bodies within mailing a letter, which is expensive. Who knows what would happen with the mail?
Okay, next one, Pat Patton?
Yeah, I would, I would say we should decline on this one until we contact her. She's an alternate, she's made two out of four meetings, let's call her and ask her if she wants to continue.
She came in and said she would be willing to continue, sorry.
But I mean, you know, we need to ask the question, are you gonna be able to show up for meetings? I think, you know, we don't...
She said what, what more? I couldn't...
She said she would still be willing to participate in the library board.
Okay.
I mean, her, her term doesn't end until August.
We can bring it back.
So, I mean, we can, we can come back in July, and look at these again in July.
You'll just be appointing on the second meeting of the month, which is unusual, so you would just give us that direction to do that, anyway.
Okay. And, so, then I'll make a motion to, uh, reappoint Carol Robichek as an alternate member to the library board, ending 8/15/16, because she has perfect attendance.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Bremer.
Can we, we, I missed the Pat, Patton.
We're gonna bring it back.
And, and this is how I feel about that, I mean, there's a process, and I actually, it, it's difficult for the staff to do this at every meeting, so I'm in favor of reappointing her, even though he ha, she has two absences, and she's willing, because, and we have to make it an agenda item, it's more work for Lenore, she's publishing these things, it's work for the staff, so, you know, we only have one, I guess, the meeting in, first meeting, so I'm gonna make a motion that we just reappoint her for the board, the library board, go back to...
Well, I'll be happy to call her myself, and just let her know that, you know, that's a big issue for the council, and we really need you to, to be at the meetings, and, you know, if you can't, send us a letter to resign, we can do that, that might be a time saver.
Okay. Um, we have a motion on the floor at this point with no second on this, well, first off, we have a motion on the floor for Carol Robichek, and, uh, to be reappointed, so let's take care of that motion first, please. Any further discussion on that? Hearing on Lenore?
Councilman Deanan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goddard?
Yes.
Councilman Bremer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Eric Tina?
Yes. Okay, we have a motion on the floor for Pat Patton. Do I have a second? If I is for lack of second, we have Dwayne Swanson. Swenson, excuse me. Recreation Board.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Dwayne Swanson to the Recreation Board, term ending 8/15/16. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Gott. Further discussion? Hearing on Lenore?
Councilman Bremer?
Yes.
Councilman Deanan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goddard?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Eric Tina?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, we have one, let's see, one more. Natalie Carter, um...
It was noted recently that, um, Mr. Salamato resigned from the board due to moving out of the city, um, therefore, there's an alternative issue on the CERI by three plates, um, and she can be called as a support.
I'll make a motion to appoint Natalie Carter as an alternate on the Community Redevelopment Agency Board. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Bremer. Further discussion? Hearing on Lenore?
Councilman Deanan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goddard?
Yes.
Councilman Bremer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Eric Tina?
Yes, motion carries. Any further board discussion? Hearing on, moving on to Agenda Item 16, adoption of the May 7th regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, minutes of the May 7, 2014 meeting as submitted. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Gott. Any discussion? Hearing on Lenore?
Councilman Bremer?
Yes.
Councilman Deanan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goddard?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Eric Tina?
Yes, motion passes. Uh, any further business before council?
No, sir.
Hearing on, meeting's adjourned. Thank you, staff, thank you, everybody.